It's not quite seven, so yeah. And you're ready down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you ready? Okay. We'll get started then. Okay, thanks for coming to the school board meeting tonight. We welcome you all out. We have our superintendent and business administrator and all seven members of our board here tonight. We welcome them as well as our representation from our unions, media, and patrons who attended tonight, and our district staff. Happy to have everybody here. We will start out with the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item of business on the agenda tonight is our truth in taxation hearing. We'll start with a presentation by our business administrator, Mr. Doc Reynolds. Doc.
I forgot, I'm first today, so sorry about that little delay. And as you know, in the past, as we've had a truth in taxation hearing, we like to usually have a presentation before we open it up for public comment, just to, as an opportunity for those who are present or may not have heard from our, our school board about some of the reasons why and, and what we're doing, so. It's been four years since we've actually had a truth in taxation hearing, so it's just been a little while. But I like to go back too because years ago, we came up with a, a ten-year plan. And in that ten-year plan, and you can see some dates in there, it was adopted by our, our school board. Part of that plan, we decided that we would, wanted to keep our rate level from year to year, which would include going through truth and taxation many of those years. Now, saying that, I know it's a, it's a political decision that our, our, that our school board has to make, and so, I say that because we haven't always done this every single year, but we have, we tried to for, for a while there to stay consistent. But as you know, other things come up. We had some other issues, some bonding in elections and other things that we, that we've chose not to for, for the last three years. But, but this year, on June twenty-third, for our budget adoption, I was asked to bring two budgets to the school, school board. We just called them version one and version two. Version one included no increase in our budgeted tax revenue. That would be the, another word for that is a certified rate. Version two in, included what happened if we kept the rate the same as we did the prior year, and that would include going through truth and taxation. So that's what brings us to this point today. With that, for those who know me, I like to, I've always enjoyed, for some reason, these despair, these despair statements. They look like a motivational statement that most of you see, but this one's on economics, and I like to put it in there. Why would we have two different budgets? And so, for those who can't read, it says it's economics is the science of explaining tomorrow why the predictions you made yesterday didn't come true today. So sometimes, sometimes we feel that way. But the, the main thing I wanted to answer is the two questions. Hopefully that everybody, if I jump, if I don't jump ahead, that everybody leaves here at least understanding, and that is, why is this considered a tax increase if our rate is the same? And what is the district doing with the proposed increase in revenues? So those are the two things I wanted to address. Every time I talk about property taxes, I, I like to say that it's the only tax that I'm aware of that is based on revenues and not a rate. You know, most income taxes, they, they tax a percent of income. Same thing with the sales tax and everything else, but, property tax and the reason that our school board, it's a, it's an important, reven, source of revenue for them is because it is stable, and I say that because it's based on budgeted revenues. And that means in, in a year when values go up throughout the county, and, and a good thing, that means a rate would typically fall. Because the way they do that is they take your revenue, your revenue, and they divide it by all the properties throughout the county. And so, if properties are going up, that means the rate should in theory go down from one year to the next if you're not asking for any new revenue. However, the reverse is actually true in a down economy. If evaluations were, were going down because of a recession or, or bad times, the reverse is the opposite. The, the tax rate will actually float up naturally to make sure that we continue to receive revenue. It's a stable source of revenue, and that's why, that's, that traditionally has been property taxes. So what happened this year? Well, this year, the, the county increased, and you can see the number up there. Ten percent, actually, from last year's proposed tax value. So that was a pretty good year of increase. And you can see in there, last year, our levy, our rate was point zero zero nine five six five. And because of that increase in value throughout the county, the certified rate would have been point zero zero nine zero four two. So it, it, it went down as far as the rate goes. It decreased to, to the certified rate. So our, our board had a decision to make. Do we keep it at the same rate that we have and, and, and budget for new revenue, or do we keep it at that certified rate? I do want to stress, sometimes this comes up in our meeting, but just so that we all remember that, when we talk about the overall assessed valuation increase in the county, that may not be your individual property, is, you know, that's just the sum of all the county properties, not, maybe not your individual property. So using that as an example, why is this, a tax increase? I like to use this example, and you can see in the, the small print up there, that have to go back to two thousand twelve for this, because back then, they used to assess values of property once every five years. It seemed like the county was out assessing values. And so I, the reason I use this example is because the total property value didn't change from one year to the next. And so I wanted to show you how keeping the rate the same, if your property value didn't change, would result in, in no tax, no tax, increase. And so as you can see in there, the last year's taxes, if you add up the school local levy and the school basic levy, we have two of them in there, and now we actually have three. But if you add those up, on this particular property, they pay nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents in, in property taxes. That year, of course, with this, the evaluation growth, no budget change, if you actually look at that column in there. Tax this year, if no budget change, would have resulted in paying less taxes, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents. But leaving the rate the same, which we happened to do that year, resulted in a proposed budget of nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. So you get that penny rounding in there. But it, it goes to show you that on individual property, based on values, it, it wouldn't change based on a, on a, a tax that's based on the rate. However, that's not what happens, as I explained. We have to, as a, as a, speaking of the, our school board, has to advertise anytime we ask for additional revenue, which is what's happening this year. They consider that a tax increase regardless of the rate. With that said, so what is the district doing with these, the proposed increase in revenue? This year, as we talked about it, we felt like our biggest need was employee compensation. And so this year, the money is being used to increase salaries and benefits for all employees. And I gave you a teacher example up here. Last year, our beginning teacher with a bachelor's degree earned forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. And this year, we're proposing a forty-seven thousand dollar beginning wage for our teachers. Doing, doing large part to this, to this increase in revenues. I know we're not Salt Lake District. I put it up there because a lot of times, there's a big push right now to get to fifty thousand dollars to stay competitive with Salt Lake. I realize we're not Salt Lake, we're Twilla, but I just wanted to stress where that, where that pressure is coming from. And so in order to have a, in order to increase taxes, we have to have a, we have to have this process, this truth and taxation process, which includes the county auditor. We had to inform the county auditor by June twenty-second of our intent to increase revenues. And, and then, of course, they advertise that. Hopefully, everybody received their individual, or at least on your property, received that notice from the county. They do that collectively for all entities. We also had to advertise in the papers required by law and to hold a public, public hearing, which is what we're going to do right after this presentation. And then, following that public hearing, the board has a, a decision to make, and they have to vote on a, a resolution whether to increase taxes or not. Is, is the basic process for doing that. So I know, no pressure there, right? But just some final thoughts that, that I like to bring up. This year is, would be similar to what we have done in the past, and that is just keeping our rate level from one year to the next. That does capture new revenue, new growth, which is why we're doing this. Talk about our, our growing needs as a growing school district and, and continuing on that plan that we had, we had proposed years ago to address those concerns of being a growing district. And I'll leave you to read the rest of those bullet points up there. And that's, that's all I had, unless the board had any questions.
Any questions from board members? Okay, thank you, Lark.
Okay.
For the presentation. Okay, this is a, this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. I'll remind you, the comments for this need to be specific to the truth in taxation. Com, truth and taxation comments, and you will have three minutes to speak. I only have two people signed up to speak. If you could also state your name into the microphone at the beginning of your comments, so we have that for our public record, that would be awesome. If you don't, I'll probably remind you to do so. But we will start with Jonathan Gerard, and he will be followed by John Brunz. Sorry if I said that wrong. And, yeah, and just a reminder, it's not a discussion. We're, we're here to hear your thoughts, so.
My name is Jonathan Gerard. I'm from Lake Point. For the last forty-five years, I've lived here in the county, and I've raised, I, I've raised my family here, and I have been paying property taxes on my own for, since nineteen ninety-nine. I do homeschool my own children, and when I see these tax increases, it really hits me in the pocket because you tell me that the rate is staying the same, but my property tax appraised for a higher value. As it raised for that higher value, what it equates to me is for my house, which is just sufficient for my size. It's just a manufactured home. The appraised value, market value is saying two hundred and seventy-three thousand. It has five bedrooms and I have eight kids, okay? It's causing my taxes, just for the school portions, to go up over five hundred and fourteen dollars. Just this one part here, it says it will go up seventy-eight if they keep it the same rate. But because my property is appraised higher, it's actually four hundred and nineteen. So that turns out to be about forty-two dollars a month that I'm paying just to the school that I could be using for my own children. And so with the, with anything that you're doing here on these rates, I would encourage you to keep them down lower because it is substantial, especially in people, people in my circumstances. I know up at the state legislature, they've tried to get credits and things like that for people to, do homeschooling, but it takes stuff out of my pocket. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my, my glasses are fogging up. My name is John Brunz. I've, I've lived in Twilla now for forty-three years. And I'm opposed to this tax increase based on the fact that you, as a body, don't need to raise the taxes because the county is doing your dirty work for you. Okay? Because they have assessed my property higher each year, and I've seen it been going up markedly over the years. I've lived in this same house for thirty years. And with this tax increase, my taxes to the Twilla County School District have gone up three hundred and forty percent over thirty years, okay? I can tell you, I'm, I'm retired, so I'm on a fixed income. And guess what? When I was working, my salary didn't go up three hundred percent or more, okay? So just be aware of those that are living on a fixed income. You know, this, this can be an added burden, okay? I appreciate what you're trying to do, the problems you might have to, because I know this county is growing, and so I just want you to know that there are some here that would discourage the, the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunz. You want to speak? Sure. You need to come sign this first, please. We'll crush you off that one. How's that?
All right, sounds good.
Just state your name in the microwave, or in the microwave.
Are you hungry?
In the microphone. Pizza pocket too, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Dennis Cutter, and I brought my taxes in. I'm against it. I'm looking at it. And I'm with him. The county's raising it anyway. I paid fifteen hundred last year, and with my appraisal of my house, I'll be paying almost sixteen this year. I've lived here five years. My taxes gone up almost six hundred dollars in that five years. If we're talking that, that's almost a hundred dollars a year. I know it's saying it's going to go up fifty with this proposal, or sixty. So like him, the county is assessing our house at higher values. I went to the city meeting last week. They have four new, maybe it was three, three or four new subdivisions coming in. It's going to bring more revenue for you guys too. Most of the people on my neighborhood, they don't have kids. My mom live, I live on one tenth of an acre. My mom lives on three quarters of an acre. She only pays four hundred dollars more than I do. That's a big change in size of lots, house size, everything. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, those are the only comments I have signed up for, that people have signed up, so I will, we will close the public hearing, and we will, is my microphone weird? Because it feels weird to me. Then we'll go to three point three, resolution adopting the final tax rates and budgets. Back to you, Lark.
Okay. What you have in front of you, as far as the resolution? Wow. That, that one would, the resolution in front of you would be to increase the taxes at the, at the point zero zero nine five six five rate that was proposed. The other option would be to keep it at the certified rate of point zero zero nine zero four two, but either way, it does require a, a vote by the board to finalize it, and, and then we can sign the appropriate resolution.
Mr. Brian, you have a comment?
No, I'll give, I'll give you a motion. We can have some comments to the discussion.
Okay.
So I motion that we adopt the proposed rate of point zero zero nine five six five as proposed.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved by Scott and seconded by Kathy to adopt the resolution as presented, resulting in a tax rate of point zero zero nine five six five for the twenty twenty calendar year. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to just state, go on record to state that we do hear your comments and understand that we all live in the county as well. My house was assessed, had a, a very large assessment this year as well. We are going to use this money as, for teacher and staff salaries, and so I feel like it's a great use of tax money, and we did have a lengthy discussion last meeting about that, so. Thank you for coming. We do hear your comments. We do understand. Three point four is adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay. Back to me, huh?
Yeah.
Um, this one, as you recall, last time, we adopted a tentative budget with the intent of going through truth and taxation, so with that inten, with that intent, I prepared a, a version three that would, to, that would more accurately reflect what, reflect what was negotiated this year. And so I wanted to make sure I had that version here, and we would propose it, that be adopted as the beginning budget for our fiscal year to include all the proposed increases that were negotiated.
Any questions about that budget from board members? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I would propose that we adopt the proposed budget version three as our budget for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Kathy, to approve the, proposed budget three for the fiscal year twenty-one. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Four point one will be patron comment, comments. Apparently, I'm having a problem speaking today. Okay, and just a reminder for the public comment period, I do have some, some people signed up. You will be limited to three minutes for your comments. Mr. Brian is the timekeeper. And just remember that if you have some comments about personnel, that those are better not in a public meeting, but on a private level. And you will also need to state your name in the microphone, so we have it for our records. So again, we will start with Jonathan Gerard.
Jonathan Gerard, Lake Point. I am actually so glad that you guys care so much about the children. I told you that I homeschooled. I have some children that have needed speech therapy or language pathology throughout the years. I have two girls right now that need this. I'm concerned that when they go to receive this, they're going to be having masks on, and they're not going to be able to see how the mouth is moving and things like that during that, so there's a concern there for me. And they spend usually about ten, fifteen minutes once or twice a week. There's another concern I have here, and that is I have a child that was born at thirty-one weeks, and he is now ten years old. We were told by our pediatrician that he needed some help, so we brought him to the school to get him some help, maybe a hearing test and a few other things. They told me that they could not help him being homeschooled, even though my girls were, unless they enrolled him into school entirely. And so where you guys care about the children, I don't know why we're not able to have him be able to be assessed like our doctor asked for and be able to receive some help as well. So those are some of my concerns there. Once again, it looks like you're sufficiently funded because you all voted affirmatively to raise the budget and to raise or to keep it the same rate. And I would appreciate some help there, some direction there from you. I know this isn't the right place for that, but I wanted to bring it up as a public concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
We can address it after, or we have his phone number, so we can.
I just, I wanted to comment on it and just promise that I'll, I will follow up with you. Regarding child fine and regarding services, we do provide that for special needs students, regardless of whether they're homeschooling, so I'm not sure which school told you that, but that would be inaccurate. We have no problem providing that assessment. Now, delivering services is a different, I mean, you know, when we deliver those special ed services, we deliver those to kids that are enrolled in the district, and of course, you can make that decision at a later date, but we should definitely be able to help with the assessment and, you know, the, any testing that we, of course, we have, there's a process we have to go through to get your permission, et cetera, but I'll refer you and have him wave, Mr. Jackson.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Okay.
And I'm, we have your phone number and your name, so we can contact you. Just as a, generally, as a public comment, we, we can only talk about things that are on our agenda. The superintendent can talk about other things, but we can only talk about things that are on our agenda, so we listen and we can address them as needs come up.
We'll follow up with you on that. I'll have someone contact you. Regarding speech, we do have face shield options because we know that those kids need to see. So I'll, I'll have Matt Jackson follow up with you. Be back.
LeVar Caldwell is next. Nope, that was Dennis Cutter. I crossed him off. Okay, well. What? If it's not about taxes, sure. I mean, if it's just a public comment, sure. You, you have to come up and speak in the microphone. You can't. Come up and, you're next on the list, so you can state your name and speak in the microphone, because otherwise, the people online can't hear you. And it's not, and it, and our recording, you're on a recording.
Right.
So.
So I just have a question. Dennis Cutter in Twilla City. You guys voted into office? Yes, you are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Bryan. Not until you start speaking.
My name's Paul Bryan. I'm from Stansbury, and I was hesitant to say anything. I know I'm a week or two, or a month late on this, but I've had a lot of people talk to me about it, and I don't know why they're not here, but they asked me to voice their concerns about the school reopening plans, and I know you, you voted for the four days. There were three, three principles, I guess, for keeping people safe from this COVID nonsense. One was keeping people home that are sick. Second was wearing face masks, and those have been addressed. The third one was the social distancing, and I, a lot of people are feeling like we were a little quick to just jump back into four days and not alternating schedules or anything, and threw our hands up and said, we can't really social distance because we've got full classrooms. And I know it's, it's probably too late to do anything about it now, but I wanted to voice that concern that I think we could have done more to relieve the pressure on trying to keep kids apart. I'm not sure how that's going to happen. I know they've got plans in place for other things, and my last comment was, I hope that those plans are followed. Not sure all the guidelines always are. The comments we got back when we voiced some concerns were, were less than satisfactory. They seem to say, don't know that anybody's going to tell kids to stay apart, don't know that they're really going to ask them to put on a mask. So I hope that all the plans really will be followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Lee Chaney?
Hi, my name is Lee Chee. I'm from Stansbury Park. And am I too late to talk about taxation questions? Did I get that wrong on the wrong list?
Well, we did already do taxation, but we'd be happy to hear your comments if you want to give them.
And actually, it's more questions. I, I think there's a lot of confusion about how the taxation process works. I know that I am confused about it. I am not necessarily against a, a tax in- I know that I am confused about it. I am not necessarily against a tax increase. I'm against being confused about it.
I think we all would agree with that.
I think that transparency and simplicity are really important when it comes to people not being upset about having their taxes raised. I think that, I voted for the bond, for instance, it didn't pass. I think part of the reason why it didn't pass, probably the main reason in my opinion it didn't pass, is because people, as some of the frustrations that have already been expressed, people are just thinking, this is just creeping up on me, and I don't understand why, and I don't understand what it's being used for, and it happens every year, and there's a different reason every year. And I'm not clear on, on what you guys have to do with it. But question number one, really quickly, since I've only got three minutes, I've got to start my timer, is, do you have a range that you work within, that you can, you can choose to raise the levy to? In other words, it's raised about seven, 7.5% this year by the mechanisms that Lark discussed over here. What if you wanted to go to 35? Is that okay? I mean, is there a range that you guys work with that you're limited by law or statute?
Simply yes, there is a maximum by law.
And that, that's set by state law?
Yes, it is.
And how close are we to it?
I, I think we, we aren't really, we don't really discuss in public comment. We just listen, and then we can follow up with you and answer your questions, but it's not really a discussion period.
Okay, great, I'll just, I'll just throw out all my questions.
But we can write them down, and we can follow up with you.
But let me just offer this, similarly what we suggest with superintendent, which is, sorry, you can't see my mouth moving.
There he is. Are you speaking?
No, sorry.
Oh, right here, okay, Scott, sorry.
So, anyway, but let me just, let me just offer this, and that is outline your questions, kick an email over, and between our business administrator is happy to explain it, but I can tell you that it takes most of the board members a good solid year to learn those kind of things. There's a, there's a lot of state laws that are applied to answer your question generally. And rather than try to answer those in this forum, I think the best would be to, and even pick up the phone. I know that Lark's been really good about taking some other public comments, and he's shared, he's shared those back with the board. So call the district office and ask to talk to the business administrator.
And that's you, Lark?
Lark Reynolds, and he's great to explain those things and could take that time. I'm volunteering his time, but that would probably be better form than this, because we really can't. It would take the better part of it.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, I'll just close with, with just my, where my confused state is currently. And I think it probably, from the comments that I've heard earlier, applies to a lot of people in the county. And I'm hoping whoever's here from the Tooele Transcript Bulletin can maybe try to help out with clarifying this. But my understanding is, you can't raise taxes without a legislative action to do so, other than the example of the ranges that we're talking about. This is my meager understanding at this point. So your revenue base, your revenues need to stay the same, other than if you have new residents move in, and that adds to your revenue base. But if you want to actually increase what somebody has to pay, you have to do it legislatively or regulatory, and you have to have a taxation, truth and taxation meeting, which we're having today. So if someone's property valuation goes up, say, you guys, everybody's talking about, I got a double hit. We raised the rate and my property value went up. Doesn't matter if your property value went up. You shouldn't have to pay more taxes unless somebody else's property value went down and theirs went down. Otherwise, that's taxation without representation, or it's taxation without a truth and taxation hearing. Say, we're hearing about the rate here, but we're not hearing about the valuations go up. The valuations go up shouldn't affect anybody's taxes going up unless you vote on that, we vote on that. We vote you in to decide for us or whatever. So that, that's sort of where my confusion lies, is why would it be a double hit for somebody? Because if their valuation goes up, somebody else's valuation has to go down to keep your revenue the same, because you can't increase revenue just by valuations going up. Anyway, comment, but I'll get the question answered by Lark.
Thank you, and we will follow up, and just one note is, we have nothing to do with valuation, so.
Right, that's when the gentleman said the county does your dirty work for you.
Sure.
I don't think he meant it, you know, I mean, I don't mean it that way harshly, but.
Perfect.
I do.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Come back anytime. Next on our agenda is, are the consent items, and these are the minutes expenditure, revenue and disbursement reports, personnel decisions, amended trust lands plan, 150 mile contest, and a request for a statement of qualifications, realtor professional services. These are items that are typically passed in a group unless somebody would like to pull an item, because they're fairly routine items. So are there any requests to pull, or I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items?
I move that we approve the consent items.
Thank you, is our second.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Alan and seconded by Kathy to approve the consent items. Are there any questions or comments about that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Six point one, Board of Education Reports. Board of Education Pre-Delicate Assembly, just to let everybody know what that is, is our school board, belongs to an association of Utah school boards, and we each year come together and determine what our priorities are as far as speaking and working with the legislature. And so we have each year a delegate assembly where we send some representatives from our board in our region to discuss and determine those legislative priorities. So Camille is going to give us an update on the pre-delicate assembly.
I just wanted to do a quick reminder for the board to let you know that that is next Friday night, and it's not going to be in the normal USBA offices, it's actually at Canyon School District Center. Starts at 6:00 PM, and then the following Saturday is the delegate assembly, which Julia, you are an alternate, and I'll find out if the other ladies are planning on going or not. So I hope that we can all make it. If you don't, are not able to attend Friday night, they are doing a Zoom meeting, and President Adams and Speaker Wilson will be speaking to us that night and answering questions, so.
Thanks, Camille. I just was going to note in advance my absence. The Buffs are playing the Cowboys that night, so I'm going to have to pass, but thank you very much for the invite.
You can always watch the Zoom later.
I'll give it strong consideration.
Thank you.
Watch Zoom while you're at the game.
Thanks, Camille. Okay, seven point one, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Rogers. It's not on, I don't think.
Three, there we go, okay. I'm happy to spend a few minutes with you, just giving a, a report. Lot is going on, as you're aware, and so I'm going to try to be quick with this, because you, I don't have to read the whole PowerPoint. First thing I want to talk about is the new school in Vernon. And since we haven't been able to have a, our, our, next slide. Our proper groundbreaking, well, we had the groundbreaking, but our ribbon cutting, our opening. I wanted to give you a little bit of a virtual tour. So you can see there the school, it looks great, it's nearing completion. There's a, gosh, this building that we've replaced was built in 1920 something? 1905, so it, it, it lasted, you know, a century. Yeah, we got our money's worth out of it. This is for kids in the south end of the county at Vernon. You can see the kitchen there, there's a classroom, there's the multipurpose room, and the site, and then that's one of the restrooms. So it's really a beautiful facility, and Steve and Michael Garcia, our construction manager, they've done a great job with this building. So that's the new Vernon Elementary. We'll get started with school, and then when we can safely, obviously, we'll, we'll do a ribbon cutting and, and, but the residents in Vernon are very excited. So the same plan will be repeated, it will look different, the skin outside will look different in Ibapaw, but that's another very old school. You appropriated money, not through a bond, through our savings for these two necessary existing small schools. So that's a great thing that we need to be very proud of, the new school in Vernon. Anyway, that's one topic. Next topic I want to share with you, I think is great news for our kids who struggle with mental health issues and behavioral issues. We have a new partnership with Tooele County. We're calling it the Youth and Family Resource Center, but it's right there on Main, it's the building there on the picture on the left. It's the building that was formerly occupied by Valley Behavioral Health. And right next to it is the Youth Services Center, the juvenile receiving facility that has been opened. We're a part of that, we're providing the behavioral classrooms, and we're providing, we've moved our parent resource center and our youth in custody and counseling and social services and homeless to that. It's past time, far past time for Tooele County to have more coordinated services for kids who are in need. And so I'm really thankful to Commissioner Kendall Thomas, and to Matt Jackson and Brian Duncan and Mary Ann. That's the team that's going to be staffing this program. There'll be two classrooms, an elementary one and a secondary one. We've only had one teacher there in the past, so we are expanding services for those kids and families who are in need. So we're really excited, and the last picture there is, you actually have to park in the back. There's not much, there's limited parking on Main Street, you go around back, and that's what the entry looks like for the Youth and Family Resource Center. So we'll be taking the kids that are in state or Tooele County custody, we'll be doing the education safely. Obviously, once they've, they're in this juvenile receiving facility, and we provide the educational services. So it truly is a partnership with state juvenile justice and the county. So I think that's really, that's a, that's something that is long awaited, and we really need it. All right, next up is probably the three guests that I invited tonight, probably the most exciting news of all. So I want to have, where's our TEA president or vice president? He'll come up here. I'm gonna, I'll grab the mic. And then I want to ask Linda Clegg from the foundation, and Marisa Manzio, President Manzio, to come down here. So you guys come up right over here. And we're going to bring up our Teacher of the Year, and her name is Amy Gergich. And she's from Stansbury Park Elementary. And we're going to try not to embarrass her. I can tell you that we were over the moon, and she's over the moon. Her principal speaks very highly of her, she's one of those teachers that is requested by parents and just does an awesome job, and it's an honor, they say the greatest honor is to be nominated by your peers. And she was nominated by peers at that school, and that was confirmed through the district nomination process. And so we want to present Amy Gergich with a check for $1,000, a plaque, and this really nice sign that says Amy Gergich is the Tooele County School District Teacher of the Year for 2020. Really? What a heart attack, Amy. She does have a sense of humor, too. The additional gift that we have for her is from the Tooele Education Foundation, and I'll let Linda talk about that.
We are so proud of the foundation to be able to recognize these outstanding employees of the Tooele County School District. And the foundation, along with Purple Mattress Company, is giving you a queen-sized purple mattress. So we'll talk about getting that to you.
Okay, now I have three, we have three people that are going to receive mattresses, and we have one out there. So don't fight over it. And Amy, if, you're going to have to have a truck and some muscle to get it, they're pretty heavy. They're rolled up like a burrito, but they're very nice. Turn to the next slide. So there's a kind of a double, a double announcement. This just keeps cutting out. There's kind of a double announcement in that Amy, and it's been a long time since we've had a state finalist, but Amy was announced as one of the five finalists for Utah Teacher of the Year. What an honor. Congratulations. Now, would you tell us who you have here? Just recognize your family that you have here, Amy.
So I had to bring my family with, because they are my number one support, huh, guys? So I brought my husband Brad and Ty, my son, who's going to second grade. Kate's going into fourth grade, and Nellie's going to fifth. So when I said that, I told them that I was the top five, and I said, "Isn't that so cool?" "I can't believe it," and Nellie goes, "I can believe it, Mom." So they've been my biggest cheerleaders this whole entire time, so. But not only that, this mask is, I don't know how you take these on your ears. Not only that, but like the community that I teach for, and I represent, not only the school that I teach for, but the community, and then also the teachers right now for Tooele County School District. So it's a huge honor, a dream come true, totally. So I'm really just honored to be here and represent teachers and education.
Thank you, Amy. We just, we're just tickled, and we're behind you, and we wish you luck in that interview process and that selection process, because we know you're number one regardless of who they choose. So in our book, you will represent us very well, so thank you. All right, next up is our Classified Employee of the Year. Is anybody from SPOT SD here? Our Classified Association? Okay, why don't you just fill in, you guys? Our certified, our Classified Employee Support Professional is Julie Olson, so we're going to have Julie come up here. She works in the Child Nutrition Program, and I know she puts a lot of miles back and forth from one of our kitchens here down to Vernon, which is part of the reason why I showed that really nice Vernon Elementary. It's going to be really great for those kids. And, but Julie Olson is our Support Professional of the Year. I don't know, Mr. Wyatt's not here, but he could not stop saying enough positive about Julie and her attitude, and her approach, and just her value to the kids. I mean, it takes a village, and really, we need our support professionals in every way. So Julie will receive this nice poster banner, Support Professional Employee of the Year. She'll receive a $1,000 check and a plaque, and then she'll also receive the Purple Mattress from Tooele Education Foundation, and those are great mattresses. So Julie, tell us who you have here with you.
My husband Mark, that's all I could drag in.
That's good. So we appreciate all the work that you do. The food service program fed 70,000 meals a week, and even higher some weeks for our kids during fourth quarter and during the summer. So they've done an incredible job with the grab and go, and without having a kitchen in Vernon, those kids and that community was well taken care of, so Julie, thank you very much. Last up, but not least, is our Administrator of the Year, and he is here. I'm going to have Casey Kress come up. And Steve West, would you come up with me, and you can hold this? Yeah, do the gauntlet of shaking these board members' hands, I forgot that. But Amy, so before you leave, make sure these guys have an opportunity to... Yeah, fist bump, I guess. Okay, Mr. West from the Operations Department, I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about Mr. Kress. Let me just tell you, one of the best, most effective administrators we have. And he was selected and nominated by his peers, the other administrators. We have some great classified supervisors, we have some great certified school principals and other leaders. Nobody did more this last year as far as being flexible and being, and going the extra mile than our Child Nutrition Program and our Food Services. They just did a commendable job in a tough environment, uncharted waters. So Casey, we appreciate you, you received this. So Casey, we appreciate you. You'll receive the same thing, the poster, the banner. You can go ahead and hand the $1,000 check to your wife as you go back there. And then your father-in-law, Dave Beecham, said he's out of here with the Purple Mattress. So you might have to, anyway, let me, I went ahead and told some of the people that are here, go ahead and introduce your family and who's with you.
Yes. So I have my beautiful wife and son, Wendy and Harrison, over there. And my mom in the back, videoing me, Sarah. And then my in-laws, who I love dearly, David and Jamie Beecham, they're great. And then my grandparents, John and Pasha Hanson, out front. I want to say that to all the managers and cooks and C and P office staff that this award shows how hard we work and what we're capable of. And if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be where we're at today.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve. You know, I just want to take a minute and thanks, Casey, you know, because as we've, if we've gone on with this COVID stuff, there's one department that, there's a few, but this one has not slowed down. It's accelerated up. There's been more work, more things happened to keep kids fed and keep things moving all summer long. So I appreciate the leadership that Casey has done and for all his staff and all his people and everything. So great young men. Thank you.
Okay, couple, couple more slides. I think I only have about 65 more slides. No, I'm teasing. All right. On the COVID-19 Safe Reopening Plan, on our website, you have the Back to School Guide, which covers all of the different aspects of our plan, which is very comprehensive and very aligned to the CDC and the local health department guidelines. The COVID-19 School Manual was just updated. That's also posted online. That came from the Coronavirus Task Force and the Utah Department of Health. And so we've had a recent tabletop exercise. We've got safety protocols and cleaning procedures in place. We are going to recommend later tonight some minor changes to the district calendar, mostly to, to give teachers additional prep time, half-days before Labor Day, so that they can get online because they're going to be teaching kids. We've, we've been able to give parents a full array of choice from face-to-face to completely online, depending on different variables and vulnerabilities and risks, factors. And then I want to make sure that people understand, when it comes to masks, the governor's order was pretty clear. Masks or face coverings are required in all school buildings and on school buses. And we've had parents reach out and staff members who have different medical conditions. Now, we're staying in our own lane. We don't give legal advice because we're not attorneys. Well, most of us, except Alan. And we don't give medical advice, right? That, that's the role. I'm not an epidemiologist and we don't have anybody on staff. So we rely on the health department. And, but we are going to enforce those mask and face coverings. Earlier, we had public comment about masks and we recognized with speech and language that kids need to be able to see how the tongue and the mouth move to articulate certain speech. We know our speech therapists, we have some shields, Plexiglas, we have some face shields available for those kids. So we feel like we're going to accommodate well kids with different medical needs. There is not really an exemption. There's an accommodation to mask-wearing and to face covering. So that's according to the governor's order until, until that changes and until further notice. With regard to COVID, there's been some questions about CARES Act funding. I had a grammar request from Channel 2, so I've provided with you just an example of some of the monies we've received through CARES Act and some of the expenditures. A lot on face shields, a lot on personal protective equipment, a lot on hand sanitizers, a lot on cleaning machines like the Star Wars gun machine. And, and we're serious about doing everything that we can. We're talking about risk reduction, or what, what in the professional vernacular, they call risk management. There's no such thing as risk elimination. You have a risk every time you get in your car and drive somewhere. But risk mitigation and risk management, that is something that we can do. And that's what we're working hard on to do. Now, everybody's not happy with the different schedules and the plans, but I will tell you that we feel confident moving forward that we can keep students and staff safe. We don't have a crystal ball and we don't have a pandemic playbook, other than these two resources that we have on our website. So please check those. And on the topic of CARES Act, I will tell you that the county received CARES Act money and they are passing that through to the school district. We appreciate that. I'll just let you know that to put, you know, 7,000 Chromebooks devices in kids' hands, not as a replacement for good teaching, but as a supplement, is not cheap. Where you're investing as a school board, millions of dollars in being able to prepare and being able to offer equitable access. Broadband access is still an issue in our community, which disproportionately affects, you know, students of color and, and students who are in a poverty situation. But we are meeting with Beehive Broadband to try to correct that for those kids that need to be fully online so they can have that access. So we do appreciate this. If you'll move to the next slide, Bryce. It's okay. If I could control my own screen, you wouldn't have to. But, so here's a picture of Commissioner Milne and the Tuilla County Auditor Allison McCoy, giving us a check for $325,000. I can tell you, just the plastic shields for our schools and our classrooms came to $70,000, $80,000, as you can tell on that. So PPE stuff is very expensive, but we're, it's not about the money. It's about people and not politics for us. So we're going to do all we can to keep our kids safe. Next one, Digital Teaching and Learning. I mentioned that a little bit. That's really exciting. And I can tell you that our technology department, under Bryce Early's leadership, they're moving forward. They've got training going on right now with our, they call them DITLits, that's digital learning and digital teaching and learning instructional teachers, trainers. So they're training the trainers to bring that back into the school so that we can be better at Canvas and Google. And for us, it's not just about one-to-one devices. It's about the tech support and the professional development. And we're working on a solid schedule. That's on our agenda tomorrow morning in our SES meeting. Trish is leading that discussion about how do we spend those Fridays, those online Fridays? How do we do that? How do we structure that? How do teachers get adequate prep time and PLC time, but also check in with their kids that are online or virtual? Teacher computers were all updated. That in and of itself is a huge during the summer. That was, you know, 1,000 computers. All teacher workstations were updated so that we can run all of our programs and that our network works more smoothly and more stably. So there's a lot of online offerings. We've got more kids in My Tech High and at Blue Peak and a new program for elementary called Path Blazer through Edgenuity. And so we're excited about that. We learned a lot during the fourth quarter. We're not going to repeat the mistakes. Let me just show you the next slide. Just to remind you, there's the site for the new high school in Tuilla when we start talking about a bond. And that's what the site plan looks like. Next up is the new junior high in Erda/Stansberry. Now, I don't mean to offend any Erda or Stansberry residents, but I can't remember with all the annexation going on where the boundaries lie between Erda and Stansberry. So it's right there, if you can tell, to the north, the top is the north. That's Stansberry High School Tennis Courts. So it's kind of kiddie corner, but it's very close in proximity. That's where the site is for the junior high. And it's really a nice site. And I'm proud to announce that we have a sign-up, next slide, at Grantsville Elementary. Now, Alan, it's on the corner of Worthington and Ny Green. And you see it right in red right there? That's the future site of an elementary school in Grantsville, which, those are the three schools that are on the bond. So there should be no question that there are three schools and where they're going to be located because we have signage up and we're excited about, I mean, growth is not going away. It's not likely to change. We're not going to have smaller enrollment. We have large enrollment and the developers to thank or to blame for that, I guess. But the reality is, we have now, when I got here, we were 13,000 students. We have over 18,000 now. We'll probably top 2,000 with online enrollment, or 20,000 with online enrollments this year. That's a, that's a fairly large school district in the size of Salt Lake. So that, those growing pains, we're not funded for infrastructure and impact fees can't be charged. And so we feel like we've got a good plan and we listen to the patrons and we move that bond from the 18, 190 down to 170. And we feel like we can hit that mark for these three schools. So. And then lastly, this is courtesy of Becca Hall and Rick Harrison and our TEA family. They have been great to work with through this and appreciate their leadership and their counsel. This is our annual back-to-school night, but it's not at the pool. We're going to socially distance and we're going to the drive-in. So we'd invite you to get there early. The drive-in, the movie doesn't start till about nine or a little bit after, but it opens at eight. And there'll be concessions and stay in your car and just wave to the other teachers and paraprofessionals. Everybody's invited to this. So we're going to try that. And I thank Becca and her team for being creative with, with renting the drive-in movie. So that's my report. There's a lot going on. Unfortunately, sometimes COVID-19 and, and the pandemic kind of overshadows the other things that are going on in the district. And regardless of what the plan is, I know we have 18,000 to 20,000 kids in our community that we're responsible for to give the best possible education. And I'm as concerned about the social emotional learning and the toxic stress and, and, you know, that you see out right now. And, and we think we can safely and really want to connect with our kids. And even if, even if we have to change in mid-year, that's okay because we don't have a crystal ball. But gosh, just to get them back for a couple of weeks and check in with them and see where they're at and assess things and get them going. I mean, even if we have to pivot, that's okay. And, and we're going to do our best to keep kids and staff members safe because we truly care about them. So that's my report. I would stand for any questions and thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any... Hello? Okay. Any questions for the Superintendent? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, very much.
I'll just give a shout-out to not only the Superintendent, but our district staff also for all of their work on getting back to school and the plans that are going forward to keep, to mitigate those risks and keep our kids and teachers and staff safe as much as possible. So thank you all for your work in that. 7.2 Assessment Accountability and Research Director's Report, Deb Buschek.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. I'm also happy to spend a few minutes with you this evening. I provided in the background information quite a lot of different pieces of information, including a copy of, okay, pull it a little closer. There you go. Including a copy of this year's assessment calendar, the ACT reports for the district, and then each individual high school, as well as the district assessment results for the WIDA 2.0, Access 2.0 assessment. I also put together just a short presentation about our department and including some of the key points from that background information to just share. So Bryce, it should be that first. Yeah, I think that should be that one. Yep. Yep. So this is our report. Next slide, our department team still exists of myself, Lori Allen, Justin Rasmussen. We've been together now, this will be our 12th, starting our 12th year as a team. So we continue to just work, work well together. Lori is our assistant, assessment assistant, and really are, I put on there, state test platform specialist. She's really the expert on our state test platforms, does the, all the uploading, the downloading of reports, gets people, answers questions. And then Justin was hired as our data analysis mentor years ago and has taken on the additional roles of our illuminate assessment platform specialist and our Qualtrics survey platform specialist. So we have a good team. Updates for the 2020, 2021 school year include a new version of our assessment calendar with those different risk considerations. And I provided a copy for you of the entire calendar for, for your reference. We've added three new assessments at this point. The COGAT that has to do with the Gifted and Talented, that was going to be rolled out last year, but we'll roll it out this year instead. Keyboarding, which is a new requirement, and just been working with Chantel Cowan on getting the information about that. So you'll see that the calendar that you have, the schedule you have says draft. Keyboarding is going to be added. We've just been working on that. And then Acadient math. We received information that we have some additional CARES-like grant money that flows through from the governors. And so we'll be able to purchase math screener, similar to our reading screener in the early grades. So we'll be adding those. I talked to you before about the task force work and the great work they did. So we'll now have those assessment menu options available for the district. And then, good news, kind of exciting news, no big accountability changes for next year. So I won't have to come and train on any new updates for accountability. The report cards, they're still going to be provided for the schools. It's yet to be determined, all the information that, all the information that they have will be on there. But our anticipation is they'll, they'll look the same. They'll just be blanks where we didn't have, like end-of-year testing and those kind of things. So once those come out, I'll be back to share that, those results with you. Research requests, we completed, we had six approved and completed last school year. Some even continued to be completed during the time school was in the soft closure. We have three that are currently approved for this school year. And just if you're interested, one of them has to do with testing the effect of comprehensive school physical activity programs and active gaming in rural Utah schools. So that'll be interesting to see what, what comes out of that. Another one is parent preferences for before and after-school programs. These are the ones that'll be being conducted this year in our district. And then the last one is examining factors that foster middle school students' engineer-designed thinking in literacy-infused technology and engineering classrooms. So interesting stuff in the area of research going to happen in our, in our world this year. The 2020, as far as the 2020 ACT profile reports, they look very much like those in past years. So if you're familiar with the format. So I'll start with the district profile report. We have good news all, all around. As far as the district goes, the percentage of students meeting those college readiness benchmark scores increased or stayed the same in all content areas. So that's good news. The percentage of students meeting all four content area benchmarks remain the same. And there's a table on the next slide, we'll see it, but also in the profile reports as you're looking at those. That's Table 1.1 on page seven of every report. The average ACT test scores rose from the prior year in a couple areas, math and science, and only dropped slightly. I mean, barely worth even saying it dropped, 0.1% in, in English and reading. So very slight drops there. And that's at the district level. But I do want to say that noteworthy is, as you look at those individual reports, there were some very significant gains in some of our schools, notably Dougway, Grantsville, and Tuilla High. So just want to give a real shout-out to seeing those increases, which, you know, they're diluted as they all fold into the overall district report. But I would encourage you to take a good look at the individual school reports as well. Just a little bit of comparison for the statewide average scores. They also increased in all content areas. And our district continues to be about the same amount below in the percentage of students either reaching the college readiness benchmarks and also in our average ACT scores. So we'll keep an eye on that in future years. So any questions on the ACT reports? Very much familiar, should be pretty familiar to most of you on that. This next slide was just a capture of that... This next slide was just a, a capture of that page seven where the top table, table one point one, shows our five-year trends. And you can see across there that we, at the district level, we were either at the same as we were the year before or increased. And the same is true in that next table, one point two, our average ACT scores. You can see that they either just dropped slightly or increased. So it's always good for me to come up and present some good news. The WEDA access will be the next. That's our state online summative assessment of English proficiency for our English learners. Administered each spring, last spring, we administered to two, six hundred and ninety-six of our students. And the bulk of those students, as far as results, came back falling into the developing proficiency level. It's about the middle, start with, we have five, up to six levels that they can be. And then, and looking at a three-year comparison, which we'll see on the next slide when we get to that, we continue to have more students than the prior year reaching the next two higher. So after developing, the next two higher are expanding and fluent. So you'll see that we continue to have more students reach those higher levels, which is good. An accountability reminder is that the E L progress does count for thirteen points in the school, on the school report cards. And that's based on student progress, both how they score on the test, but also the percentage of students that are meeting their growth targets. So if they had a test the prior year, they'll have a growth target set. And then there's points awarded for that. So I think the next slide shows three, yep, our three graphs for. The first one on the top left is the proficiency level comparison over the three years. So you can see the bulk, each of the three years, the bulk of our students come back in that middle or developing level. And then you can also see how we've gone up and continue to have more students in, moving in the expanding and fluent level, so that is good news. The percentage of students who met their target last year, last spring, fifty-one percent met the target. That's in comparison to forty-five percent the year before. So pretty good raise on, on the percentage of our students meeting their growth target for this assessment also. More good news. And then the last one is just to share with you the current twenty, going into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the current number of our E L students and where they come in at each proficiency level. So information for you on that. Any questions or comments?
Yep. Do you have any accounting for why the increased ACT? I've brought this before.
At those particular schools?
Schools. If we're doing something that's amazing and working, then I hope we share that information with the other schools, because we want that kind of growth in all of our schools.
And I don't know. I don't know if that's something that area directors would be able to, you know, in their work with the schools, what, what they're doing that might lead to that. I know, I think all of our schools though took advantage of some professional learning from, we had the lead ACT person from the state assessment department come out and do a training on using the state core benchmark, which is on the same platform that the ninth and tenth graders take their end of year assessment. And it's also the same platform on, on ACT. But she also woven some real good information on the very best thing you can do is to understand our state standards and teach to our state standards and the relationships between those and how well students perform. So I don't know, area directors, if there's anything else you'd add on particular things that schools are doing, if you want to come up?
You have to go to the mic, yeah?
Yeah. Or I can bring it to you. We'll make you come up. Because, and Tooele High did have a very nice job.
I'm not the most flexible to be crawling over everybody.
Impressive though.
Um, just a, I know just a couple of thoughts is that the junior class at Tooele High School the year before this one was a really low ACT scoring class. When they were freshmen, they were only one in four proficient. And by the time we got them to the ACT test, they were over fifty percent proficient. So we were proud of that, but it was lower than the previous year. So part of that gain is just a reflection of having a better class. And then the, the kids who took the ACT this year, now they got to take practice ACTs when they were freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And so I'm, I'm sure that contributes to it, too, just having that knowledge base to work from as they work up through the system. So just a couple of thoughts, sorry.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
I have a quick question. Um, I know you mentioned that there weren't any major changes to assessment this year, but.
To accountability.
Or accountability, I'm sorry.
Yep, the reports.
Can you kind of give a brief, what parents should expect for assessment the first couple of weeks or months or?
We'll continue to do, if you, well, it'll be kind of hard to go through, but you have the assessment schedule and we'll continue to do very similar to what we've done in the past. So kindergarten, within the first three weeks of school, they'll have a kindergarten entry, no different than we've done in the past. We'll have our Acadience Reading, used to be Dibbles, now called Acadience. We'll have those conducted in grades K six, the first through end of September. I did just receive today information that if we need to extend that because of these circumstances, we could have the first couple of weeks in October, so. But that's very similar to what we've done in the past as well. The new assessment that we haven't done before would be that Acadience Math as we roll that out. So have the kits ordered, just received word last week, the end of last week, that we received the funding, so kits are being ordered. We'll receive those. Training will be involved. So we're hoping to have, when we talked today, we were hoping to have those, that assessment done by the beginning to end of October, so.
Very similar to what we've done in the past.
Very similar to the past, adding this math screener, which is pretty important at the element, you know, the early years to really, and, and we wrote that specifically as a, a means to assess for any gaps in mathematics in the early years.
Perfect, thank you.
Otherwise, it's pretty much very similar with test windows.
And that accountability schedule is attached to the board information, so anybody can see that.
It is, yep, it is. And, and we posted on our, on our website as well. Superintendent pointed out, I may have misspoke on the numbers on the WEDA because the colors are opposite. Even if it's the forty-nine that are yes, that's still higher than forty-five the year before. My apologies on that.
Thank you, Deb. We always appreciate good news.
Yes, it's good to bring it.
Okay, moving on to the action items, eight point one is the early literacy plan for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. It looked very similar to last year's early literacy plan. Do you have anything more to say about it, Mr. Reitzel?
Um, I don't. I can talk about it as much as you want to talk about it or as little. I'm excited to be invited to be here for what I think is arguably the most important goals in the district. So I'll talk about those to whatever level you'd like.
I would not disagree with you there. Do you have a question or?
Well, I, so you mentioned this was a repeat of last year or, or very similar to last year?
It's very, very similar because of the shortened year, yeah.
So it's not that dramatic a change?
No, it, it's not dramatic at all. I mean, very subtle, yeah.
Julia?
So I just had a question. The twenty-two percent. I mean, I, I really think that that is a great number, but I'm wondering with COVID and with maybe gaps and stuff, are we holding fast and true to that or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is still set a high standard to push forward. I definitely think that there, you know, depending on the scenarios that we're in this year, I think the state is going to have some understanding for that. But we didn't want to necessarily dial our, our goals back, especially in this area where we've got so much, so much needed gain.
I mean, I like that. I just, I don't want teachers to be pressured since they've got a lot of.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And we're, you know, as we work through whatever processes we're using, we're going to keep that in mind.
Any other questions? Okay, then we do need to approve the early literacy plan.
I'll make a motion that we approve the early literacy.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Melissa to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty-one early literacy plan. Any discussion to the motion? Do you have a, no? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Cody. Eight point two, time and schedule updates for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Superintendent?
Well, they're pretty straightforward. This is a huge lift for our teachers, putting a district not just going to face to face, but everybody will be online, at least on Fridays, and some, many will be full-time online. So we're proposing to have early release days, the first two weeks of school for grades two to twelve, and early release days, the first three weeks of school for grades one, and change the early release time to eleven thirty and twelve thirty for secondary and elementary schools respectively. Kindergarten will start on September eighth after Labor Day. This will give our teachers time. They'll have kids for half a day. It's more of a gradual. It does, you know, it doesn't address the social distancing per se, but it does address how long the kids are there per day. We visited with T E A about this and they are supportive of pushing back the full day start till after Labor Day. We're hoping we'll get good news and we'll continue to, in here in Tooele County and in the state and in the nation, trend down, you know, with, with COVID, irrespective of testing and all those other data points. But we just think that's probably the best way for us to start the school year. So we would ask for that modification, that slight change to the calendar.
Ellen?
I guess I can move and then, and then we can discuss. But in order to do that, I have to be ready to move. Okay. So I approve, I move that we approve the time and schedule changes as presented for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Ellen and seconded by Kathy to approve the time and schedule changes as presented for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Discussion to that motion. Ellen?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, I guess, confirm with our virtual learning days on Friday. My understanding is that there's still a thinking, or the understanding is that the teachers will be either teaching or preparing during that early, up to, what was it, twelve thirty or whenever the?
Twelve, eleven thirty or twelve thirty?
That, that, yeah, that there would not be like P L C during the, the morning time. I just wanted to confirm that.
Well, we, we have that on the schedule to talk to about tomorrow, but I can't confirm that because some schools are going to want to have flexibility to do. They're going to be, they're going to be teaching that day. I mean, it is a work day. But we need to also make sure that we have time for team meetings and prep and P L C time.
I would want to specify that that is in the afternoon. And the morning is set aside for teacher to be available for their students and for prep time.
Whatever we do, when, when we do online, we're going to have to be, think differently about it. Like every teacher can't say, hey, I have an online Zoom meeting at ten A M. Because that, that gets kids tripped up. So we're going to, the schools are going to have to schedule those kind of things, especially the secondary schools, if that makes, if that makes sense. So a lot of that Friday teaching doesn't necessarily have to be synchronous, where everybody's there at a Zoom meeting. It can be asynchronous and discussion boards and other assignments and that kind of thing, and teachers just checking in with their kids. But we had talked earlier about wanting to put together some sample schedules for how that Friday would work. But it is not a, is not a, a prep day or a non-work day.
Well, and I under, yeah, I understand that it's not a prep day. I also understand that especially at the elementary level, your prep opportunities are limited if your afternoon is all P L C and your morning then is taken up with training as well. So that's my concern.
Well, we'll, we, we've talked about, there's a, there's a mixed need. So we got several things and we talked about, you know, the P L Cs won't take all afternoon or all morning. They don't now. We usually set aside one hour for P L C and then the other time is prep time. So they do need to have some time to do data work and P L Cs, but that should only be an hour. Correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, that, we've got that down for about an hour. That should leave time for checking in with kids virtually and for prep.
It might not be down, might not be on. Sounds like it. Sounds like it's on.
Sounded like it was on.
Little feedback.
I think I'm on. Um, and so tomorrow in S E S, I'll be sharing a document that the instructional planning, we call it now a collaborative as opposed to a task force, because we want to continue that work, has put together, I'll be bringing it to S E S. We are looking at instruction as not being synchronous, that it's asynchronous. And that teachers at an elementary level are actually going to be planning an hour of English Language Arts and an hour of mathematics for students. Secondary, it's on a five-period schedule because we're going to continue to do the A B schedule. And they'll actually plan for thirty minutes of instruction per content area, which would give our, our secondary students two and a half hours of instruction. So the concept of asynchronous is that the students will be able to do it at any given time. During that period though, of say eight o'clock to eleven thirty or eight o'clock to twelve thirty, would be to have teachers actually set and maintain some office hours so that students can reach out to them if they have some questions, some concerns. But the understanding is that it would, is not a synchronous Zoom meeting where everybody comes in. There would be flexibility for teachers to be able to continue to collaborate with their partners and their, and their team. They'd be able to do some of their own professional development that they choose, not directed by the principal, but by, for their own, their own choosing. And be able to develop continued lessons that are digital lessons, because that's the purpose of our Friday, is to help our teachers become better digital instructors and our students to really grasp digital learning. And so the concept of the afternoon remains the same. P L C time should remain the same. And that's supported by the, the principal. And then the elementary planning in, in, in the afternoon needs to stay sacred. That's their planning time. So we have a schedule. I just want to make sure we go through it with S E S and share that with our leadership, and then we'll get that out so we're extremely clear about what that day looks like.
We did, we did, we were able to move, part of that change that you are considering is to move those early release times. The reason we were able to do that is there used to be language talking about a minimum day needed to be four and a half hours, and that is no longer there. They didn't give us much flexibility on the hundred and eighty, but they did on the nine ninety. So anyway, that's when we thought, let, let's take that opportunity, I think it was Doe's idea, to give our teachers more half-day time to prep. But really, on those Fridays, that time after lunch, after they get back from lunch, that afternoon time should not be influenced. It's actually a little bit longer now than it's been in the past because we're releasing a half-hour turn.
I just want to say, I think it's a great idea where we're going. And we all need to be patient and take our time, because just because it turns to a new page, it may take a few days or a few weeks to really get adapted to it and accept it. So let's just be patient with everybody and not jump all over somebody because we think it's a bad idea after it starts.
Kathy, exactly. We want to have flexibility now and understand. And like we said with principals, to lead with grace and have that understanding of the flexibility for everyone.
We need to be patient and wait for you to develop your program, because sometimes we mix up a batter debate, but we have to wait a little while for it to really work. So let's not get impatient.
Any other questions on that? Does that answer your questions, Ellen? I think by having it in a written form, that's extremely clear. We've had the conversations, but sometimes conversations get skewed. So having it in written form that we're all in. But sometimes conversations get skewed. So having it in written form that we're all on the same page, I think will really help to make sure that we stay true to the purpose.
Melissa, Nanceka?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question or maybe just going off of Ellen. I, I've gotten this question a lot. And last year, I would have a lot of teachers say, I mean, I had six kids in the system last year and some were doing things certain ways and some worked, some didn't. They were all experimenting and learning. But there was some consistency that some teachers were like, I'm online from eight in the morning until ten at night, you know, dealing with, and not, they weren't negative about it. They, they love their students and trying to figure that out. But that's why I'm hoping this Friday, or even leading up until school starts, they kind of get a grasp of online learning does not mean they're sitting in front of the computer on a Zoom call with your class from, I'm talking elementary, from nine to twelve-thirty. No, 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 they're, they are assignments and it's, it would be awesome get to the level that on Friday afternoon, when they're planning for the next week, that that lesson is already, I mean, it could be, I don't know if there's a rule, it could be already up and going for that Friday that they're not, I mean, that, that's obviously the end, end goal.
Continuum, exactly. And we have to recognize that not everybody's going to start the race at the same spot. And that's why that flexibility and grace needs to come about. What it looks like in September is going to look very different, I'm sure, than what it will look like in December as we grow our skills. Both not just for the teacher, but for the student to be able to navigate. So we don't want to just put our kids on Google in classroom on a Friday. We need to do it during the school year where we're modeling and we're being able to show and teach at the same time.
And so that's where, Ellen, like I want to make sure that our teachers have sacred time in the morning. That it, it may be, I don't want to say it's their planning time, but it may be their, I mean, I love how you said, their own professional development. They may be grabbing another teacher saying, hey, I saw that you put a really cool thing online. Can you teach me how to do that? Or, you know what, I'm, I'm putting my thing online right now for next week because I learned how to do this thing. We need to really, anyways, and I feel like we're on the same page, but I hope that's portrayed to teachers that
I think this document will help.
Yes, okay.
I, I think you've illustrated, man, this mic system. I think you've illustrated one of the concerns that we had about the hybrid model. Because it's not as simple as, gosh, we have, have half the students. Well, when you look at the teacher day, it becomes more challenging and there are more logistics with that model. Every model has a, a, a pros and a cons. The con to that is when we're on the five by five, Melissa, teachers at the secondary would only see their kids once a week. Because on, if they're Mondays and Wednesdays, you would teach one through five, half of them. And on Wednesday, you'd teach the other half, one through five, and you'd have to do that lesson twice. And so actually, the burden, it's going to be interesting to see, because the burden is going to be on teachers under hybrid model that are in other districts, is going to be quite interesting to see if the teachers can leave it for knowing that half of their kids didn't get that lesson that day, and are they going to be tempted to try to get online? I think it's going to wear those teachers out. Now, it's a hard lift anyway, but if we can limit the online, not for kids that are full, but the kids that, you know, are enrolled face to face, if we can limit that online to Friday and protect that prep time and that PLC time, I think it'll be better for our teachers overall mental health. I really do. And, and people aren't thinking, they're just looking at one metric, which is six feet. If I have half the kids. Don't kid yourself. There are other ways for kids to contract besides six feet. The recommendation is three to six. We're going to do the best we can. But if you get hung up on that one thing and you don't think about the actual ramifications of that decision, you could be very surprised.
Yeah, I think there was just a study that came out about that. Scott?
I, I just wanted, I've heard and, and sensed, since our last meeting, one, one other observation to the calendar. And I just want to make sure I kind of tease it out of this and it's not buried and, and lost someplace. And that is, I'd heard some conversations about, well, on days that we have a Friday holiday, we lose our, that day. And, and I just want to make sure I point out that that is not the case. The, the intention on those days that a Friday school is not in session, that half day is moved to the last day of the week. And in fact, in, on Thanksgiving week, it's moved to Wednesday. So and, and I, it's been there all along, but I, I've heard some rumblings that, well, we lose Fridays because Friday's a common day that we're out of school and we lose that time. And that is not the intent with this schedule. It is actually moved to the last, last day of classroom time of the week, whatever that would be.
Good point.
He said, we're not going to have two different early release times. Is this holiday early release or is this regular Friday early? We're just going to early release the same time, regardless of whether it's on a Wednesday or a Thursday, where it falls on the calendar, early release times will be eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty.
And so I appreciate that. And I just wanted to kind of tease that out of this. It's in there, it's always been in there, but I just want to make sure that that was kind of articulated because I'd heard a few rumblings after our last meeting about, well, I don't get as many prep days. The reality is you, you'll get one every day, or sorry, every week, at least weekly. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Ellen?
Can I just follow up on one point? It's a great point, Scott, and I agree completely. And I am super reluctant to engage in any kind of micromanaging. I mean, I, we, we need to delegate to the experts. I will say that my expectation is that Friday mornings will not involve mandatory school-wide training. And so, you know, the asynchronous, I guess that's the hot new word, asynchronous, asynchronous, whatever, might be a different story. But in terms of, you know, my expectation, I guess I won't make it a formal amendment, but that, that would be my understanding of how, how we would approach it.
Okay, I agree. Okay, I think we, any other questions? We have a motion on the table to approve the time and schedule changes as presented. There are no further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a couple of TSSA plans that need to be approved. I do know that it's not, it wasn't a deadline, a hard and fast deadline for them to approve the, to get those in today. So we will see more TSSA plans in the future, but those that were ready were, are just going to be approved at the board meetings. So these are the three that were submitted in time for this board meeting. Are there any questions about them? Otherwise, we just do need to approve the, the plans. Unless you guys have something extra to say.
Since we've had them in advance, we've had a chance to review them already. I would just make a motion that we go ahead and approve those three TSSA plans that have been submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Scott and seconded by Kathy to approve the TSSA, three TSSA plans as presented. And again, if you are watching online, you are welcome to view those same plans that we are viewing and have viewed. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight point four is the Twilla Education Association negotiated agreement for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Do you need to say anything about it or?
I would like to yield my time to Becca Hall, the Vice President of TEA.
Thank you. It's on.
Checking. All right. So Becca Hall, TEA Vice President. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for inviting TEA to speak about this tonight. The negotiated agreement came after many great discussions. And the past several years, TEA and the district have really worked together and built some really great relationships between leadership. And we feel that negotiations doesn't just happen every spring. It actually happens all year long. And this year it happened almost daily all summer long. So we were able to come to some great agreements. Some of those include the wonderful salary package that we were able to offer our members, some wording changes and some practices with our hiring protocols and procedures. And then of course, some ongoing flexibility and adaptability as we continue to move forward and really work hard to protect planning time and PLC time with our teachers. TEA presented this to our members. We, all summer long, we've been working with our building representatives, who, one of them, by the way, is your Teacher of the Year. And they've been doing an incredible job at getting information out. TA has been holding member Q and As. So our members definitely know what's going on and what was presented to them. We presented them with a ratification vote and we approved ninety-nine point six-four percent voted to ratify the agreement.
Awesome. Thank you. Should we clap for that? Any questions from the board? It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Well, I, are you waiting for me to make a motion?
Well, your light came on, so I assume you have something to say.
I was just going to note that I strongly support it and, but will be abstaining from the vote.
Right, okay. Any other questions about the negotiated agreement? Otherwise, I would take a motion.
Well, then I'll give a motion since Ellen's going to abstain, that we approve the two thousand twenty-one negotiated agreement with TEA.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Scott and seconded by Ellen to approve the TEA. Second, oh, who did I say?
Cat, Ellen.
Oh, gosh.
He's out.
He's out, he's out. Okay, it's been moved by Scott, seconded by Kathy to approve the TEA negotiated agreement for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Our motion will adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Kathy, how dare you?
Well, I've been seconding all night, so I thought, well, that was my job tonight.
You deserve it. You deserve it.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming.